Good afternoon and welcome to the June 11, 2025 budget workshop for the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. At this time, I'll pass things over to the county administrator for opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today marks the third of four scheduled budget workshops leading up to the delivery of the fiscal year 2026 recommended budget, which will be at your regular meeting on July 16. The fourth scheduled workshop will take place on July 23. During that session, we recommend focusing on transportation, stormwater, and the indigent healthcare fund. Of course, additional workshops can be scheduled at the board's discretion if needed. This afternoon, Kevin Brickie will begin by providing an update on the county's budget status. His presentation will include a review of the June 1 taxable values that were provided by the property appraiser, a look at historical investments in public safety and transportation, and a preview of the strategies and investments that will be reflected in the recommended budget. Following Kevin's presentation, George Cassidy and Lisa Ray will offer a brief update on water resources. Their presentation will focus on the One Water Project, which will ultimately be the largest capital project in Hillsborough County's history. Given the significance of this initiative, we felt it was important to provide the board an update and an overview of the project and also the broader utility system. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin Brickie.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kevin Brickie, Management and Budget. As the county administrator mentioned, I will update you on where we are as we continue the process of constructing the county administrator's recommended budget, which will be presented to you on July 16. We're in the late phases of that. We continue to keep in mind our guiding principles, where we are looking to adopt a strategically balanced budget, where recurring revenues and recurring expenses are in line. We look to use our restricted funds first as opposed to more general, broader use funds, maintaining our reserves at the board policy of between 20% and 25%, prioritizing public safety, maintaining infrastructure equipment, service levels, investing in our employees, and identifying savings opportunities. The property appraiser did issue the June 1 estimated or early estimates of taxable value and assessed value. That came in countywide at 6.5%. That was slightly above our expectations, which were 6.3%. We had an expectation in the unincorporated area of 6%. It actually came in at 6.05%. The rate of growth of assessed values and taxable values continues to decelerate from the high of 15% a few years ago, as we continue to see higher mortgage rates or persistently higher mortgage rates, and inflation that persists a little longer than had been anticipated. Inflation in May ticked up to 2.4%. It's still a little bit higher than what the Fed is looking for, but it is reflecting in the housing markets and our expectations of revenue in that slowdown. And looking at property tax millage rates, our millage rate countywide in FY25 is 5.6025%. That's about 28% below a previous peak back in FY99 of 7.75%. Our unincorporated rate, 4.4745, is below the three cities. And again, the unincorporated millage rate is the millage rate that pays for city-type services in the unincorporated area: fire rescue, transportation, things like that, which account for a large portion of the unincorporated fund. The county does maintain its AAA rating. It's one of fewer than 50 among 3,000-plus county and county equivalents across the nation. The FY26 recommended budget will include an additional .1 millage swap. And a millage swap again is where the budget will recommend a .1 reduction in the countywide millage rate in exchange for a .1 increase in the unincorporated millage rate. That will be in addition to the .1 millage swap that was included in FY25, and the additional .0283 millage reduction countywide in FY25. This enables the unincorporated fund, where we've had those challenges of keeping up with service deliveries, to service demands, to benefit from this swap. For a tenth of a mil, that will be a reduction of about 17.9 million countywide, a increase of about 10.6 million unincorporated. There'll be a net decrease of $7.3 million. That is a tax savings to parcel owners in the three cities. It's also good to mention that there is a debt millage that the board has had for many years, the unincorporated area debt millage for parks. That bond issuance is maturing this year, and that .0259 mils, which is currently levied in the unincorporated area, to pay that debt service will be eliminated in FY26. That will be a savings to unincorporated parcel owners. Looking solely at the impact of the millage swap, of course, it's an even swap for those who are in the unincorporated area, .1 down, .1 up. But in the cities, that does result in a net for a house with an assessed value of $350,000. That does result in a net decrease in property taxes of $30. Looking at reserves, currently in FY25, reserves, combined reserves of the two general funds are 23.8%, which is a little bit above the midpoint of the board's policy of 20% to 25%, and the kind of percentage that the rating agencies look for in AAA-rated communities. We expect and we're projecting that the FY26 rate in the recommended budget will be 23%, down from that 23.8%. Our projection is that countywide reserves will be 24.7%, unincorporated reserves will be about 20%. That difference has been persistent for a while, is reflective of the greater challenges of the unincorporated area fund. As we look at opportunities for some savings, we did look at our nondepartmental allotments. That's where we budget some things that are unusual and outside of departments. We were able to decrease some unallocated funds, some funds that were set aside for other uses, such as federal labor laws and such, and also some other smaller ones at about $17 million. The lower reserve ratio, that freed up about $15 million. Again, the millage swap is about 7.3%. Looking at nonprofits, a reduction of 3.7%. Some of that is, of course, due to the fact that some of the, many of those newer ones are one-time. We looked at old projects in the capital improvement program. We had some realignments and some reductions of about $3 million. That parks debt elimination, that's 2.6 million. Department budgets, we looked at some operating budgets of departments and saw some areas where we could tighten up, about $2.5 million. And we looked at long-term vacant positions, and those eliminations are about $1.3 million. Now, in FY25, we had some opportunities to use some one-time funds and able to invest in certain capital projects, particularly as interest rates remain high and we had high interest earnings. But also due to the fact that in these last few years, we've also had the opportunity to use pay-as-you-go dollars that have generated from the current CIT. And as interest rates have persisted on the higher end, and also we have additional CIT dollars and some opportunities with half-sent sales tax reserves, we find ourselves able to make similar investments in the capital program. Looking at the general funds, countywide unincorporated CIT, about $134 million in transportation, $33 million in fire rescue and emergency management, the sheriff $30 million, stormwater $10 million. We have Veterans Memorial Park at five. Pet Resources, that's a current project where we have design money to design a new pet resources facility, $5 million there, and some various parks projects at $4.6 million. Our opportunities to invest from these three sources in transportation have been particularly enhanced in those last couple of years, as I've just mentioned, as we've had those opportunities with recently rapid growth in sales tax revenue and in those interest earnings as well. We see that sometimes our opportunities are countywide, sometimes they're unincorporated area. We do, in this one, have an increase in the unincorporated area. Some of that is due to the opportunity we've had from those half-sent sales taxes, and that's included in that $73 million. Total investment in transportation over these seven years, $340 million from those sources. And here's where that breakdown is: bridges and guardrails, corridor safety improvements, sidewalks, intersections, resurfacing, additional funds in Lithia Pine Crest and Van Dyke. In addition to these sources, there's about $47 million in other sources, mainly mobility fees and fuel taxes, a few grants as well, that will be in the FY26 budget for transportation. Total new funding for resurfacing is that $35 million you see above, plus $5.4 million in fuel taxes. Looking at fire rescue, another priority, of course, public safety. Here, we're looking at the annual operating budget over the past six years and that projection for FY26. Over this period, fire rescue operating budget will have increased about $131 million, or about 71%. As well, positions in fire rescue have increased. Again, we expect an increase in FY26. These increases often come as we have new fire stations come online, as we have new rescue units come online, that sort of thing. Over this period, fire rescue, we project will have added 192 positions, or about an increase of 16.8%. By comparison, all county administrator departments, including fire rescue, over that time, has increased about 9.5%. Not including fire rescue, county administrator positions have increased about 7.6% or 352 over this seven-year period, six-year period. And then, looking at capital investments in fire rescue over this period, including an FY26 projection, about $191 million. Looking at, we had, in FY25, we had three replacement stations, a new station, and a number of new rescue units. So that was a large amount in FY25. In FY26, we continue to look at this, a new fire station, a replacement fire station, are those main ones, as well as some equipment, excuse me. And you see that history by the type: replacement stations, about $75 million, new fire stations, $42 million. And over that time, since 2020, including the projection for FY26, that would be eight replacement stations, four fire stations, 16 new rescue ambulance units, and four Sherp vehicles, as you see the picture on the slide. Also, looking at some other public safety capital investments, looking at the sheriff. These are investments in addition to the sheriff's requests for operating. The sheriff has requested operating and requesting new positions, so there is that increase. But this is capital investments outside of that. The operations center relocation, about $70 million. Jail maintenance projects to refurbish those residential pods in the jail, about $50 million. A training facility, $15 million, and the step-down facility, about $5.5 million. Another area, looking at catastrophic reserves. You've heard me before talk about our catastrophic reserve and how we have been fortunate to have that reserve, particularly as we've had storms, and particularly in this last season, or the previous season, where we had three storms, and it required a lot, extensive response, and particularly debris removal, other operations as well. We started out FY23 with a catastrophic reserve of $123 million. As those storms moved through and the board recognized the need to respond, the board did move in two separate actions, $100 million from the catastrophic reserve to the hurricane-storm funds in order to meet that need. And so currently, our catastrophic reserve sits at just below $25 billion. We recognize the importance of having funds set aside, and that we will, in the recommended budget, have about $108 million. That comes from some continuing funding from the countywide fund, some reimbursement from older storms is also in there. Those FEMA reimbursements do take time, so we will have made some good headway at replenishing those reserves. Another related area, the CDB, the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery. Of course, that is a continuing subject that you've been discussing. We're currently in June, where we're looking at the board receiving a draft action plan, a public comment period, community meetings in June. In July, tentatively, we're looking at approval of a final action plan and submission to HUD. HUD will review that plan, looking to look for a approval in August and an implementation phase beginning in September. And finally, you've seen this calendar many times, maybe know it by heart. We are in the third of four workshops. The next workshop, July 23, will be looking at transportation, Public Works, Indigent Healthcare Fund as well. We have had those June 1 estimates. Those June 1 estimates are what goes into the recommended budget. The July 1 estimates, which will come out, will be the harder numbers, which will actually flow into the adopted budget. They will not be in the recommended budget, as that will be, as they say, put to bed by that time. Our budget delivery, the county administrator will deliver her recommended budget at your July 16 meeting, followed by the reconciliation public hearing, where the board will set its truth-in-millage rates, have its flagging process on July 30, and the final public hearings on September 4 and September 18. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your brevity, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Winstall.
Thank you. That was a great presentation.
Thank you.
And that was very transparent to me. Thank you very much. If you can go to Slide 8 for me real quick, which is the estimated budget savings.
Yes.
Thank you again. I've brought up this line item, nondepartmental allotments, last year, and that was a frustrating one for me. And we can, outside of the meeting, I would just like to understand what type of cleanup was done, kind of like what line items you found. It'll just be more informative to me. But I'm very grateful that you took the time to go through that and brought it up this year.
We can do that.
Thank you for staying on top of the vacant positions and continuing to clean that up. We brought that up a couple of years ago. I didn't know that the millage for the parks was only temporary for debt. So that was a temporary thing, and that's going away. But that was only for debt service. That's interesting. So thank you very much. This is a lot of property tax reductions for the citizens of Hillsborough County in a myriad of different ways, and I'm very pleased with that. If you could just go to Slide 11, just one more time for the public to see, and I just wanted to say how absolutely beautiful of a slide that is. I'm very grateful for it. I want to understand the bullet point where it says approximately $47 million was invested from other funding sources. So I see that this is only talking about property taxes and CIT, and this is referencing mobility fees and the gas tax. The gas tax, I'm assuming, is being used towards additional road resurfacing on top of the $35 million, or do we know?
5.4, so $35 billion above in the table, another 5.4 million from gas tax.
I see the second one.
So what it is, is that the three that are there, countywide, general fund, unincorporated, CIT to some extent, are more flexible.
Yeah.
So we were showing the most flexible.
Yeah, no, this is great. And maybe I'll get with Public Works, but I think what would be great for, I know I would like to see it, I don't know if my board members do, but where on the sidewalk maintenance that we're putting in, to what number that brings us up? The first list I got in 2023 for the sidewalk backlogs was 989 complaints behind from 16 years ago about. I know that we've done a really good job on catching that up. I'd like to see where, to which number this new sidewalk amount is bringing us up to, if they're able to do that and apply the numbers, because I know they have projected costless for each. I would just find that very helpful. But I thought this was a great presentation. We're putting enormous amounts of money into the things that people are asking for, and I am very pleased. Thank you.
Commissioner Wols.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Slide 7, we talk about the county general reserve, and I note that the 23% projected is an amalgamation of both unincorporated and incorporated. Is the, you know, the difference between the two, the 20% in the unincorporated, have anything to do with our recent payouts with the hurricanes?
No, no. This is just looking at the opportunities we have and realizing that our reserve ratio had crept higher, and so we have the opportunity to have it come down. We're using the opportunity to fund one-time items, and so those are things that are not detrimental to a credit rating.
So we're purposely bringing it down. This, I think, I'm not sure if I was part of the board then, but I know we, the board has taken action to squeeze that down a little closer to that line.
Yeah.
That gives us the AAA rating where that they want to be. So we're using the offset with the countywide reserves to bring the overall up, but the unincorporated is continuing to be brought down?
Each one is declining a little bit. The countywide reserve was above 25%, and now we're at the
23, 24.7.
24.7.
Right.
Unincorporated was a little bit higher. It was closer to 21, and now we project it'll be closer to 20. It was closer to 21, and now we project it'll be closer to 20. These are reductions in ratios.
Okay.
The actual level of reserves is going to go up a little bit, but as a percentage of the expenditures, it is lower.
Okay. And I'm just curious, just on number 8, under the vacant positions, how many vacant positions, long-term vacant positions, are we eliminating?
That's 14.
Just 14?
Yes. Some years ago, we had an elimination much larger. We tend to keep good watch on that.
So 14 positions is 1.3 million?
Yes. Fully loaded.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
I've got one question, and I should have asked this ahead of time. But regarding the CDBG disaster recovery, where are we on engaging additional consultants to help us with this process? I know we're going to be doing that. Is that for the implementation phase? Or when does that kick in? And when do we need to go through that process? And what's the status of that?
I believe that's the implementation phase, but I'll let Mr. Fessler comment.
Yes, Commissioner. So right now, as you're aware, we're going through the public meetings. On July 16th, we'll bring back a final action plan for your approval. We're at the point now where we're starting to look at the structure of what we're going to have in place as far as our departments, who's going to participate. And then also, we're going to be starting very shortly, within the next week or so, developing the scope for an RFP that we put out on the street for consultants. Just within the last week or so, Pinellas and Pasco have put RFPs out on the street. So that at least gives us something to look at. And it should be, should help us as we try to move forward. We're staying in close contact with them. But I would anticipate within the next month or so, we will have, month or month, month to two months, we'll have something out on the street.
Okay, and then we just need to have that wrapped up by September?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you for that, Commissioner Hayden, because you reminded me of something. Since this is really our, we don't have a whole lot of time to talk prior to that July 16th date coming up and the plan being presented. I just wanted to mention something here that the county administrator and I spoke about after our meeting where we talked about the need to expand the landfill. And that was the idea that perhaps this CDBG plan, given that some of our landfill availability problems were directly caused by the amount of debris that came out of the hurricanes, this might be a place that we can look to fund some of that expense. And the reason I bring it up today is because of a plan's coming on the 16th. I just wanted to publicly mention that that would be something that I know I would love to see in there. I mean, obviously, it probably can't be fully in there, but in there in some form.
Okay. Commissioner Wolsko.
Just staying on the topic, one thing that I had talked about is when all of this enormous amount of money comes in, and a good point that the administrator had made, which is that the permitting offices cannot staff because this is an ad hoc need. But that, to my understanding, an administrative percentage is allotted for in there that would allow for us to use a third-party permitting agency of some type or temporary employees. And I just want to make sure that if that is possible to put in the RFP or if you believe that there's a better way to handle that, that's fine, and I'd like to hear it. But I just want to make sure that we avoid burdening the normal day-to-day business of the permitting department that is used from regular fee capture, that this would kind of impede the normal non-disaster recovery efforts from continuing, if that makes sense. So whatever needs to be done, if it is a third party or if you believe it's, you know, my reservations about temporary employees is how many temporary employees then get converted into full-time employees later on. But, you know, maybe that's not a reality. So thank you.
Okay, I don't see anyone else in the queue. So next item. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. George Cassidy, Assistant County Administrator for Public Utilities. And today, we're here to talk to you a little bit about our capital program for the Water Resources Department, and in particular, the One Water Program that we have going on down south. A little bit about the department and our core services and mission. Obviously, we provide drinking water to our residents. We also collect and treat wastewater. And we turn reclaimed water to a portion of the customer base and for irrigation and for industrial cooling purposes. We serve almost 800,000 people within the unincorporated area. We are, our mission is clearly to protect public health and safety, and we do that with environmental stewardship in mind and the best possible customer service available. We operate in a fiscally responsible manner, and that is witnessed by the fact that we are AAA-rated utility. If you look at one of the most recent affirmations from Fitch, we're AAA with Fitch and Moody's and AA with S&amp;P. And I think in our conversations with the county administrator, it wasn't too long ago, 30 years isn't too long ago, that we were practically junk bond status. And we took that moment to really retool the vision of the business of Water Resources and make sure that we operate in a financially responsible manner. And that shows 30 years later, we're a very strong utility. We've got strong reserves. We've got very, very strong financial resources available to us. I'd like to also point out that being a AAA-rated utility is kind of rare air. There's only 7% really out in the nation that's AAA, which means that 93% are not. So we're very proud of that rating. This last year's been pretty much all focused on the challenges of the hurricane season. And this slide really shows some of the immediate impacts of that storm. We had flooded infrastructure. We have pump stations that were standing, that were underwater, trees that had fell on some of our facilities, presented quite the challenge for us. The recovery happened soon thereafter, and our teams were out 24/7 for weeks, recovering our system to get it back to a place where we were operating without issue. I think 75% of the service area lost power. That means that 75% of our lift stations within the service area without power. We got 900 total, 700 without power. So if you can imagine the effort that it takes a maintenance crew and operations crew to get out and provide support to 700 lift stations, community lift stations, that didn't have power, it's pretty daunting. I'd like to also add that during the time of this storm, we never lost drinking water supply to our customers. The entire storm period, we had water to our customers. If they may be out of power, they may have been underwater, but they still had drinking water available to them. So we take pride in that. We have a pretty resilient operation. And that is about it for my intro. I'm going to pass it over to Lisa Ray. She's going to complete the overview of One Water.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Commissioners, I mean Commissioners and Mr. Share, Lisa Ray, Director of Water Resources. And thank you, George, for the introduction. So I'm going to start with an overview of our system, and some of you have seen this slide before. We do operate a very large utility system, as George was saying. We cover a 300-square-mile area. And we have multiple water treatment plants and wastewater treatment plants. And if you lay all of the pipe that we have end to end, it is a round trip from here to Portland, Oregon. So 3,000 miles out, 3,000 miles back. But what's really telling is the amount of growth that we have seen in the last year and a half. We've added 52 miles of new water pipe, 64 miles of new wastewater pipe, 25 new lift stations, and 805 new manholes. So a lot of people moving into our area. We intend to advertise for our construction manager at risk in quarter four of calendar year 2025. So that'll be coming up very soon. We need this water because of the number of people that are moving here. And as you can see, when you look at the map, the star represents the location of the new water plant. That is also, in terms of elevation, one of the highest points in the county. So this will help with some of the pressure challenges that we experience, especially during peak irrigation time early in the morning. Our schedule has us on track to have the water plant up and running by 2029. On the wastewater side, we are farther along with the project. But I do want to take you kind of back in time. What would have happened if we had not started moving forward with this project? And that's what these graphs represent. We currently have three wastewater treatment plants in South County. And as you can see from the graphs, the red line is the permitted capacity. We would be over capacity. We would not be able to provide the service that our residents required at two of the three plants. Now, the Val Rico plant, as the board discusses, the urban service area expansion along I-4 is a plant that could be impacted at that time. Moving forward with the One Water Program alleviates that problem. So you can see from most of these graphs, we are transferring quite a bit of the flow over to the One Water campus once it comes in line. And we'll talk a little bit more about the schedule on the next slide. But I do want to point out there are still some challenges at the Falkenburg Plant, as all of you are aware of. And we are currently working with our design engineer on projecting forward what we would need to do at that facility in order to provide the services, not just for the people moving into our current service area, but if we were also to acquire the Palm River service area at some point in the future. So talking about the schedule, I do want to apologize. In the printout that was attached to the agenda item, I did have a typo on when construction activities are starting. I had it starting in '26. It's actually starting in '25. So I apologize. That was my fault, just keyed it wrong when I put the graph together. We are on track with the schedule based on when the contract was awarded. I do want to remind you that we did have about a year delay because of a protest that happened. However, we are making really good time. And we have worked with our progressive design build team to come up with an innovative way of delivering this that allows us to put 8 million gallons of treatment into service in 2028. So we expedited a little bit. That helps with some of the pressure on our other plants with final completion of the rest of the remaining service availability coming in at about 2030. So that's where you see those two green boxes. Now, overall, our One Water Program has a value of about $1.6 billion. This is a very large program. And it is going to serve our residents for decades to come. So we're excited about seeing it moving forward. And in fact, we have received our first construction permit from EPC, and that is for Segment B of the pipeline. And that is along 672 in front of the ELAP property that's there. And that will start in September. You'll start seeing construction in September of 2025. Now, all of our programs, we look at them based on our priority funding needs. Our top priority is maintaining the system for our existing customers. So that factors into Items 1 and 2. Our operating and maintenance expenses has come out of our operating budget. And repair and replacement of those existing assets comes out of the capital funds. However, our third priority is making sure that we are able to expand to provide the capacity for the new residents moving into the area. And then it's followed by septic-to-sewer and low-pressure septic system, I mean sewer system conversions, LPSS. Now, when we did our update to our CIP this past year, with inflationary impacts, the need for additional capacity, as we've discussed, for the One Water and also at Falkenburg, we came up with a $780 million increase over our five-year CIP. Now, keep in mind that our five-year CIP is $2.6 billion. So we took a step back, using the priority list, and looked at what we needed to do to adjust our CIP. And in doing this, we were able to identify four projects that could be deferred, that would allow that $780 million to go into the One Water project and the other R&amp;R-related projects. Again, these are based on our priority funding. Now, that does not mean that these projects are stopping. It just means that they are deferred. We went back to our rate consultant after deferring these projects, and we asked them, okay, with these adjustments, will our existing rate structure, which was approved by the board and runs through 2032, cover our needs? And the answer is yes. Our rate sufficiency analysis shows that we are able to provide those services that are necessary. Now, we continue to look for other funding. We're not just sitting back and waiting for our ratepayers. We are participating in the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and the CDBGDR, along with other county departments. And we're looking for other funding sources that we can use. And we will be coming back and discussing the need to adjust the impact fees at some time in the near future. I appreciate your time, and I am here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Lisa, for the presentation. If you have any questions or comments, Commissioner Bowles.
Hello, how are you? I was curious. You mentioned the pressure water, the water pressure issues that occur in the morning hours. Do we have, what's the system in place to help augment that while we're waiting for these four years to come by? And what's the approximate cost per year for that augmentation? Can you explain that?
Sure, definitely. Thank you. So we have two things that we are doing. One is a community outreach to work with our residents in terms of adjusting their irrigation schedules. There were door hangers that went out, and we were able to, if they move it from the irrigation system turning on at 5:00 a.m. to turning on at 1:00 a.m., it makes a huge difference in those pressure demands. That is kind of the immediate, the longer term, not that longer term, a couple of months from now, we are putting in a booster pump station up in that area. So what we'll be able to do is we're coordinating right now with the Parks Department and a developer who is wanting to build up there. And we'll be putting in a booster pump station right in the, I think it's Baum Grove East will be the name of the subdivision. And what that will do is allow us to boost the pressure for those people that live up on the hill. And that is costing us, I think initially it was about $600,000, but it is a rental. So we are going to probably be adding to that over time. I don't have the monthly cost because the 600 does include the construction and adding pipeline and such.
And there's only, there's only a need for one booster station?
So we're doing one to start. And some of our modeling has showed that we are going to need to relocate another booster. There's a temporary booster that a developer had put in that we are probably going to need to relocate, but we already own that because it was turned over to us. And so it'll be a matter of relocating it once the new one is in, and we can rerun the models to identify the exact best place to put the other one.
Yeah, because, yeah, I'm thinking as we continue to develop South County, and there's these concurrences that we talk about where, you know, as we're building and permitting goes in before you can get a CO, you're going to have to have the ability to have water and sewage there, right? So if these pumps, these temporary pumps, are they to meet the demands of today? Or are they meeting demands of the future?
So the temporary ones are set for, kind of both, yeah. Build out of the subdivisions that are being planned now because it does take time for developers to build out subdivisions. So they're being sized for that. We're also considering fire flow as part of that. And fire flow creates an instantaneous demand that is not representative of what you would see from a normal routine flushing, showering kind of demand.
You don't know what it's going to be.
You don't know what it's going to be. You don't know how many hydrants are going to open.
Exactly. So but, so there is a possibility as the next few years, if we continue to develop and build more homes and that kind of stuff, that we may need to have additional temporary pumps until we get One Water up.
And what we have done with the one, the one that's going to be installed first is we have designed it so it has one big pump and a jockey pump. A jockey pump is a smaller pump that could be replaced for another large pump if needed.
Okay, thank you, Mira.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Wolsko.
I was just going to point out, Commissioner Bowles, before you got here, Commissioner Cohen and I learned at Tampa Bay Water, the reason that she's educating people about their irrigation is that they estimate 50% of our potable water is used to water lawns. Yeah, it's a huge number, but thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I ask one follow-up? So when we're, is there a possibility? I know Pasco County has a reclaim, the purple hydrants, the purple water lines. Is there any reclaimed water when we're doing all this new infrastructure? Possibility with this new plant?
So we do have, we do produce reclaimed water, and we will be producing it. So we do have, we do produce reclaimed water, and we will be producing it with the new plant, definitely. Right now, our ordinance does not require developers to put in purple pipe. It is an option. Some of them take advantage of it, and they have reclaimed water available in their neighborhoods. Others do not. We have had conversations about expanding the requirement in some areas, and I think that has come up at some of the Tampa Bay Water discussions, so I'm sure you will hear more about that. But yes, we have talked about it, kind of isolating it, especially along the route where this new pipe is going in, because it will be easy access to the water, whereas if a development is a long way away from our existing purple pipe network, then it's very expensive to get the water to them.
Okay. I don't see anyone else in the queue, so thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Bonnie, anything else we need to cover?
No, that covers it for today. I really want to thank everybody because the water department, especially, they make everything look so easy, but there is so much that goes behind it, and I really want to thank everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that, we're adjourned.